All right, looks like we're all ready. I'm hearing a little bit of echo, but I think somebody caught that. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. This is the Planning Commission Public Hearing for May 8th. Can I start with roll call, please?
John Augusta.
Lee Cruz.
Rich Levy.
Brian Adams.
Luke Totor.
David Box.
And online, I believe Gavin, are you there?
Yep, Gavin O'Toole.
Perfect. So we got everybody here tonight, I think. Nobody's missing. So we'll jump into, oh, wait, is there any public comment on something not on tonight's agenda? No? You're my only two hopes right there, so. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Can I just make a quick statement? Given that this is a decision, the first item is a decision rather than a recommendation, and this is a quasi judicial hearing, I'm going to need Gavin to turn his video on for this item.
Toby's dressed.
Glad to.
While Gavin's doing that, is there anybody else online who has any public comment on something not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, and seeing Gavin, we'll go ahead and get into Agenda Item Number One. This is PL 2025-0050, which is 2155 Resort Drive Reuse for Multiple Family Residential. Is the applicant here for presentation? Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a point, does that mean I can vote on this? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Gabby Riegler, and this is Kevin Riegler with May Riegler Properties. We're here tonight for PL 2025-0050, which is a development plan and conditional use application for an adaptive reuse of the existing commercial building located at 2155 Resort Drive, or Lot A of the First Financial Center subdivision, formerly the Vector Bank Building. The application seeks to adaptively reuse and convert the former bank building into a nine-unit residential for sale condominium building. The conditional use application is required to allow multiple family residential use in the pedestrian active building frontage, given it is in the Community Commercial Zone District. Let's see, so here's our site plan. You can see the entire subdivision here, which was created in the late 80s. Lot A is outlined in red, and that is the subject property and the site of the former Vector Bank Building. Lot B is the office, is the office building owned by the Steamboat Ski and Resort Corporation. And Lot C is the new lounge, E3 Kitchen, and Social Club Restaurant. Here you can see that we're able to accommodate all of our required parking spaces within the confines of our lot, as we're utilizing the covered area that once housed the drive-through teller stalls into tandem parking spaces. The project also contemplates removal of the existing drive-through lane to create more open space on-site and allow for some private walkout patios for the ground floor units. And here's the drive-through lane that will be demolished and planted with some grass. Let's see, just running through the floor plans real quick. The basement level contains nine private storage rooms, one for each residence, as well as a fitness amenity space and a resident lounge area. The ground floor area contains the main entrance to the building and five condominium units. There'll be two one-bedroom plus den units, one two-bedroom unit, and two two-bedroom plus dens. And each of these units will contain a walkout patio appurtenant to their unit. The second floor will contain four residential units, all two bedrooms, and each of these units will contain a balcony exterior space. In our elevations, you'll see that the exterior of the building will remain largely intact, but for eight new added window openings and five new added exterior door openings. The building's stucco, fascia, and trim will be repainted, stone facade cleaned and repaired as needed, and a new roof will be constructed. I'm sure Toby will go into this into greater detail during her presentation, but our application contains no variances. It's consistent with the purpose of the CC Zone District, which is intended to provide areas for community-wide commercial and multiple-family residential uses. The application also helps further several goals noted in the area community plan, most notably supporting infill development and planning mixed-use neighborhoods and integrating housing in mixed-use areas. The application meets standards for access, parking, snow storage, open space, and refuse management. And as of last, late last week, we reached an agreement with engineering regarding their agreement of the cash-in-lieu alternative compliance to meet our sidewalk standard, ideally with these funds being applied to the Pine Grove Road improvement project scheduled to begin next year. We're currently working on our engineer's estimate of probable cost and hope to finalize this process in the coming weeks. In sum, we think this is a really exciting opportunity to convert an obsolete commercial property that's been sitting more or less vacant for a couple of years into a residential use. We think a residential use complements the newly renovated and reopened E3 Lounge and the recently renovated offices for SkiCor. These three buildings create a great mixed-use project, and we're actively working alongside both adjacent landowners to update the subdivision covenants and reposition the entire site with updated landscaping, site lighting, branding, and signage. I don't know if you have anything else to add? We also have our architect in attendance if there's any questions that he might need to answer.
Okay, great, thanks very much. Does staff have a presentation as well?
Sure. Toby Stoffer, Senior Planner. So as was mentioned, this is a conditional use application to develop nine multiple-family units in an existing building. Property is developed, its own CC, it's surrounded by Pine Grove Road, Mount Werner Road, and Resort Drive. The existing building was occupied by Vector Bank. There are three lots in this subdivision. It's part of an older PUD. That PUD, so those lots share parking, snow storage, trash, and other facilities and services. The older PUD is like an older development plan. It's not zoning as we would anticipate today. The adjacent uses, as were mentioned, are an office and a restaurant. The conditional use request is needed to vary the use standard, which does not allow for multiple-family units on the ground floor in the pedestrian active building frontage. For this lot, the pedestrian active frontage is along Mount Werner Road. The lot line for the property doesn't extend to Pine Grove Road, and then parking areas and parking drive aisles are not considered pedestrian active frontages. One goal of the pedestrian active building frontage is to keep pedestrian activity in commercial areas. So a potential impact from this residential use can be some less active space. The use in this building does provide for a horizontal mix of uses in the area, and the residential use at the pedestrian level is compatible with the adjacent and nearby commercial activity, and it should not impact the area. The conditional use does need to meet all standards, including parking, open space, no storage, trash, and pedestrian connections. These aspects are usually shown on a development plan. So as was mentioned, the development plan for the project could have been decided administratively. It has no variances, and all standards are met. But the development plan here helps us to see that the conditional use meets standards. So our discussion tonight can really be about the multiple-family use in this area. There has been some discussion leading up to this hearing about the sidewalk requirement. So a sidewalk is required to support the multifamily residential use. The CDC allows that standard to be met by building a sidewalk or by complying with the standard in a different way. So as the applicant mentioned, we've agreed that this project will meet the sidewalk requirement through alternative compliance, and that can either be a fee-in-lieu or provision of off-site facilities. So we're still working through the specific option to provide that alternative compliance. Additionally, the building and the site are non-conforming with regard to some dimensional development and design standards. When there is a non-conformity, our intent is to keep the existing condition the same or to make it better. So this change to the multiple-family use is not increasing any of those non-conformities. The project will come closer to meeting the standards, and some of those existing conditions will continue. So we do recommend approval of this project with the conditions as listed.
All right, thank you very much, Toby. Any questions from commissioners to staff or the applicant? Joan?
Yep, I can, of course I have questions. Why are we going with the alternative compliance for the sidewalks?
Sure. You can kind of see in this image, actually, that's up on the screen.
Well, that was going to be my follow-up, is if you could show a site, the site plan. I couldn't see the sidewalks.
Telling, we can go back to the sidewalks. Right now, there are no, there's actually a little bit of sidewalk next to E3, the old charred house. We, of course, believe in sidewalks and want to provide pedestrian access. If you look, to Toby's point, our frontage is actually on Mount Werner, and there's these beautiful, old, mature trees with the drainage and swale and all that. So to actually put it on that side, what we think would be just tragic from a main entrance to the resort and all that. I mean, these are 40, 50-year-old trees. And then we also obviously learned through the process, and I think Emmerich is on here, but that the city is planning and in stages of design and engineering for the major Pine Grove Road improvement, which of course will have a great pedestrian sidewalk access, which is over on that frontage. So we're, you know, we're, so the cash-in-lieu hope, as Gabby alluded to, is that obviously we'll just chip into that portion of the project. And so I don't want to speak for engineering. I think there was some general flexibility there. The biggest fear we had of building a sidewalk now, for example, on Pine Grove, which is, I think, where everyone agrees it should be, would be that it would get ripped up in a year or two when the city actually did their whole project. So that's the cash-in-lieu concept, at least as of now, would be to make sure that, you know, there's some dollars in the banks that we're chipping into the pot, which is totally fine. But ultimately, again, the fear from us is that we spend whatever dollars, and then 18, 24 months go by and it gets ripped up. Because ultimately, obviously, the engineering and grades of that sidewalk will need to coincide with the road improvements and everything else. But, so that's the multi-pronged reason.
So can you, can you map out where on here you're actually, will be building sidewalks and where the cash-in-lieu of would, sidewalks would?
Right here.
So effectively, our engineer's estimate of probable cost will be for a sidewalk that extends on our frontage, on our property line, for this portion here. As you can see, it's, there's no sidewalk in front of SkiCor. There's no sidewalk in front of E3 on this frontage. Like Kevin alluded to, there's a small kind of paper pathway over here, but that's the extent of what's existing now. So we're going to come up with a probable estimate of probable cost for, in the event, you know, if we were to have built a sidewalk here. We're going to pay a cash-in-lieu to the city for them to apply that to the Pine Grove improvements that are, I think they're at 60% CD. So Emmerich said it's likely to start sometime next year. And so that's the alternative compliance.
The consensus between the city, and I hopefully am not putting words in the mouth, the city, both engineering and planning, is that the sidewalk infrastructure should live on Pine Grove Road, not on Mount Werner. Period. And because our frontage happens to be, as you can see, we have this kind of like odd interior lot line situation. Again, I think there's consensus that it would be tragic to put an actual sidewalk here. Plus, that would require private easements that aren't going to happen, or at least anytime soon, on these other adjacent parcels. Hopefully, all that answers your question.
And we do have an existing sidewalk that traverses the three buildings here.
And there is great sidewalk infrastructure over here on this side, out here on the corner across from Wildhorse, et cetera. So anyways, again, Pine Grove is very much the natural spot to kind of expand upon the pedestrian infrastructure.
And I believe there's sidewalk on the other side of Mount Werner, too.
Correct.
And for the while. So for, so for, make sure I understood what you're saying. So, and so you're doing the cash-in-lieu of as a cost estimate in front of the property as it sits upon Mount Werner Road, and that's what you're paying for then?
Correct.
And then is this, I guess, a question for Toby. Is it then that money is to be put into putting a sidewalk in on Pine Grove Road, but that's going to be a longer sidewalk? So is the city funding that additional sidewalk on Pine Grove? How does that, how does that happen?
Yeah, so the Pine Grove Road sidewalk is a capital improvements project. So there is some funding allocated for that. As Kevin mentioned, there's some design, design plans in the works. Emmerich may be able to help answer as well. But, so the, the fee-in-lieu that they would pay for this alternative compliance could go to that project. It could also go to other sidewalks in the city. It's not earmarked for a specific project or for a specific location. It's just the way that they would meet their requirement for this project. So it would be equivalent to their, their length and the cost to build a sidewalk on that location on Mount Werner Road frontage, because that is their required sidewalk area. So whatever that costs, plus 10% administrative fee, which is included in the, in the fee-in-lieu cost. So that would, that amount would go into our sidewalk funds. It may be used for that Pine Grove project. It may not.
Okay, so I probably, I'm going to have some follow-up questions, but I'll just, you know, kind of lay out there that, you know, that the applicant, you stated like 14 times about the walkability of this, you know, of this project. And actually, I love the project, and I love the aspect of where it's at and the, and easy access to actually a number of businesses. I, you know, I really support that. I am struggling with how we are providing that, that walkability of the neighborhood, that, that, that core value of it, if we're not putting in the sidewalks now. And I'm also, I understand how capital improvement projects work in terms of prioritization. As Toby stated, it may never, you know, have a sidewalk there. So the key value is the walkability. That, I mean, that's why you'd want that to live there. But we're not providing that walkability. So that's an overall concern I have. So if you, I don't know if you have any comments about that, but?
Yeah, I mean, I think, as you can probably tell, this has been a bit of a circular conversation within us and the city. And again, I think the consensus is we all support, obviously, the walkability. As Gabby alluded to, there's an existing sidewalk infrastructure that just happens to be internal to the site versus where we would all picture designing it today, that, you know, runs along the front of the building. So it is, again, from a site standpoint, the three buildings are very much easily accessible to existing sidewalk infrastructure. I think the point is, there is, I've not heard anyone state that it is a good idea to put the sidewalk on this stretch of Mount Werner Road. It is more or less a viable sidewalk location for a variety of reasons, and the consensus is also that it should live on Pine Grove Road. So we're just happened, time, project timing-wise, caught in the, you know, the, it's not a problem, really. I think just kind of caught up in the natural timing of those capital improvement decisions and projects. And so as Toby alluded to, we're happy to contribute. And ultimately, one, for example, one of the topics that we would pay for is, you know, do we go ahead and put some stretch of sidewalk in today on Pine Grove Road as part of our project? But then the fear from the city's perspective and our perspective is that that money gets effectively lit on fire, because that sidewalk will get ripped up in two years, or whatever the case is. So I don't know how to articulate it any better, as far as, we're trying, you know, we're putting the money in, and we're trying to do the right thing. But again, I think it's a more kind of holistic approach to the, the walkability of this whole area, not just the, the single project, so.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
I'll go. For staff, first, I don't understand where this philosophy is, that a sidewalk on Pine Grove Road is better than Mount Werner Road.
I don't believe that's our philosophy. So I think our vision long-term would be to have a sidewalk on Pine Grove Road and on Mount Werner Road. Right now, it is a little challenging to put a sidewalk on Mount Werner Road due to those trees, but we wouldn't say that there's no possibility of having a sidewalk there in the future. Sidewalks can meander. They could be potentially attached. They could, you know, some of those trees might, might need to be removed. So for right now, it's more challenging to put a sidewalk in that location. But again, our long-term plan in the city would be to have a sidewalk on every arterial and collector, and so that would include Mount Werner and Pine Grove Road.
And unless I'm mistaken, there are other sidewalks on that side of Mount Werner Road, between there and Central Park Drive.
There may be one or two as you go through the resort group properties or along Taco Bell. I can't quite remember. I could pull up the map and see, but there might be some other sidewalks over there.
I've got it from Resort Drive on to the construction of the hotel. There is definitely a sidewalk on that side.
They don't have the mature tree situation there, I think. I mean, again, we wouldn't, to us, it was all about protecting the trees. I mean, because again, it is a kind of a gateway location for the whole resort and whole community, so that was our philosophy.
And Rich, I could also chime in. This is Emmerich Saltis, Community Development Engineer for the city. So we did evaluate the possibility, feasibility, practical ability of constructing a sidewalk along Mount Werner Road adjacent to this lot. However, during kind of that analysis, it was determined that the existing foliage, the trees in that area outweighed the existing benefit of a sidewalk at this point in time. The alternative to that would, to allow a modified section, potentially an attached sidewalk, which would impact the trees less than what the required offset would be for that sidewalk. However, it's not ideal. However, it's not ideal to have an attached sidewalk on this section of Mount Warner Road, especially with it being on a on a curve. So just a little bit more information related to that sidewalk.
Okay. I don't know, I'm still I'm still struggling with this. The first condition that's required is that the sidewalk would be impractical or inconsistent with the intent of the CDC or would not further the community plan. I'm not sure how the impractical part that I'm hearing really is being provided or demonstrated is a better word. So that's my question. How is that being met or how is that being demonstrated?
The project is providing some connections or a future connection on their site plan. You can kind of see it there along their property boundary to the west. So they would provide at least space for a connection to the future sidewalk along Mount Warner Road. And they're also providing some striping through the parking lot through to the edge of their park of their property to lead people from their development to Pine Grove Road. So by providing those connections and with the existing sidewalk in front of their building that connects to the adjacent, both the adjacent properties, they are providing those connections to they're providing the walkability and the connections for their project. And again, we hope that someday there would be a sidewalk along Mount Warner, so then that would work. But for right now, the the sidewalk has been determined to be infeasible at that location. So we are considering that alternative compliance.
Okay, the other, I have to put this in the question. Again, the question is, condition number one is onsite multimodal facility is impractical or inconsistent. They can do all they want on the other side. That doesn't change that requirement. That's what needs to be met.
The other side, what other side?
You're talking about the sidewalk on the north edge, that there's an internal sidewalk on the north side of the building. Then you're also talking about a sidewalk eventually on Pine Grove Road. The requirement is on the frontage. Condition number one is it has to be either impractical or inconsistent.
Yeah, so I think that we have determined at this point that the sidewalk along Mount Warner Road is impractical based on the existing trees that we have there for the reasons that Emmerich stated. It's difficult to put a sidewalk adjacent to the road that might protect the trees again at the curve. So we're finding that that sidewalk is impractical. And so that allows us to consider the cash in lieu of those onsite improvements.
And Rich, just to just to add on to that is we also look at adjacent developments and what's the the possibility of of those coming in with with future development plans, plenary plats and so on, where we could then require those adjacent sidewalks to also be constructed. With these adjacent lots being the Ski Corps offices and the E3 restaurant there, it's unlikely within the near future that those would come in for redevelopment. So not to say that constructing a segment of sidewalk adjacent to this lot in question wouldn't be a benefit. It would be a benefit in the future, just not at this point in time.
Emmerich, would it be fair to say that that's, I mean, that's exactly the intent of the the cash in lieu is for potential, not necessarily even being applied to the Pine Grove Road capital project, but but to this Mount Warner Road in the future when you do get to that point as a city, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
That might have to be a capital project in six years, in which case, at that time, you've already got a third of the costs for it.
That that is that is correct. And unfortunately, I mean, this section of sidewalk would probably fall lower on the priority list. However, you're correct in saying that that would that money could go go towards this sidewalk in the future if the if Pine Grove Road does not move forward in the next few years.
Thank you. Did I I didn't mean to cut off your question if you're in the middle. Okay.
Take a break.
Other questions?
Yeah, Emmerich, just just my own clarification. The the priority for the city right now is a sidewalk on Pine Grove Road. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yeah.
Yeah, Emmerich David Box, question, my understanding is there have been challenges with obtaining right of way for sidewalks along Pine Grove Road? Is that a challenge in front of this area?
Not that I could tell. So we we did look at and and we did also relay that there's a there could be a potential requirement for this development to dedicate easements that would assist in constructing a sidewalk along this frontage of Mount Warner Road. However, the distance between the edge of asphalt and where that sidewalk would go would allow an eight foot sidewalk to be constructed entirely within public right of way. So right of way nor an easement would be required to be dedicated at this point in time.
Okay, great. Thank you. The questions?
So Emmerich, John Augusta here. What is the current status of the complete streets on Resort Drive? In particular, from this this lot over to Blue Sage or sorry, Wild Horse?
I believe there's there's the sidewalk is completed on the the western portion of Resort Drive. I believe there's no sidewalk that currently exists on the eastern portion.
Is there a reason that you did not, because it looks like you're looking for cash in lieu of thinking about Pine Grove Road? Is there a reason you are not thinking about doing it, you know, completing something and that something being Resort Drive?
That that could be a possibility. However, looking at kind of the the bigger picture of this area, you zoom out a little bit, Resort Drive probably has a very low pedestrian volume that it serves. So we would look towards those higher utility areas, which would be Pine Grove and Mount Warner at this point in time. And as of now, from what I understand, this segment along, I guess, this development here is the only missing link along Mount Warner Road at this point in time.
I didn't quite understand that last guy because I there's nothing on Wild Warner Road on the north side in terms of sidewalks.
Correct. That is that is the the only missing link along the the full section of Mount Warner Road itself.
Okay. Okay. And then the missing link, I mean, I'll, you know, let you let you know where my thought process is, is basically there's, you know, new complex, residential complex. The closest link to a number of of businesses, in particular food courts and and and, you know, bars and movie theater is via Resort Drive over into that area. And that's that's a missing link of of the complete streets.
What was the question?
Am I correct that's a missing link?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Gavin, do you have any questions?
Yeah, could you either staff or the applicant, could you explain a little bit in more detail how the parking works?
Sure. Today, can you see my screen? Oh, sorry. Well, I'll just talk out loud. So there's it's very convoluted today. There's basically, we do have the three lots, lots A, B, and C. Generally speaking, Ski Corps has their own parking, but there's multi-decade covenants, restrict covenant restrictions right now and in perpetuity on how they're managed. Because again, the the Vectra building was always heavily bank used, so it had a high level of transient parking during the day. So basically, the old Chart House building had had five spaces during the day, again in perpetuity. And then they had these rights to evening parking for obviously dinnertime use. And so basically, the the rework is going to be everyone's going to effectively have their own parking. So now all three parcels will have their own dedicated parking that all meets, you know, code and compliance and obviously a lot better use in particular for the restaurant side of things, which we hope will, as anyone who knew the old version of it, it struggled quite a bit because of parking. So they're obviously very aligned to to increase that quite a bit. There will be some shared visitor parking and things here and there within those new covenants. We haven't worked every detail out, but obviously, all three parties are very much on board to to simplify and and increase the parking program. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
I can get into the weeds, but that's the that's the high level.
Mr. Chair, can I add on to that question?
Yeah, go ahead.
On the parking, so in the parking lot, you have 10 spots that are slashed to, will those have reserved signs?
Correct.
With?
Those are dedicated for the units. So they'll be common elements deeded as part of those individual and then visitor spots just which is not required, but obviously is nice from a use standpoint, will live in certain hours and certain pockets. You can imagine Ski Corps heavy use during the day, heavy use during the winter, a lot lighter use during, you know, evenings and weekends because it's an office. And then obviously, you can imagine the same for the restaurant. Kind of cleaning all that up. And then the Red Ski Corps also will get their, we have a perpetual easement on their behind their property for the driveline that accessed those old teller access points. So obviously, we won't have control for what they're going to do, but I, you know, that'll obviously create either more open space parking, et cetera, as they evolve that. So it's a big swath of land in addition to the ATM. If you ever saw that weird ATM tower over there, that's gone or it being torn down.
Perfect. Gavin, did you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Perfect. I have a, I guess I have a quick question for Toby. You already kind of said it, well, not kind of, you said it very well already in your staff report, but I'm going to ask you about it anyway. The conditional use for the mixed use or the multifamily on the pedestrian active frontage. What's the intent behind that as the code desires to have commercial uses there instead of residential uses?
I think that standard is for multiple family residential uses, sometimes residential uses in that it specifically applies in commercial zone districts. So this is a CC zone district, community commercial zone district. So the intent is to, when you have residential uses, you can have a blank, a blank space. You know, if you have an active streetscape, you can have sort of a dead space. You can probably think of some dead spaces that we have when there are residential uses that can happen. We also can consider a horizontal mix of uses. So when you mix residential into the commercial uses, that can generate some activity. Those residents residents can use the, you know, the office or the or the restaurant nearby in this particular location. So the purpose is to sort of keep a good commercial density. We don't have a very specific intent or purpose indicated for the pedestrian active frontage, but it is to sort of keep a general activity level in that area. So again, we feel like that this, there is still some good commercial activity here. It's one property out of three that are sort of connected. So we feel like this residential use shouldn't provide a dead space that we might think of in more commercial heavy areas.
Perfect. And you mentioned in your staff analysis that it's at, wait, I don't want to get it wrong, 60%, 30% is residential and 60% is commercial, which is not 100, but it that's pretty much the breakdown in that area?
Yeah, that's just for this, for the immediate subdivision, which is three lots. And my graphic in the staff report talks about sort of the mixed use area on the whole. The the community plan calls for 50% commercial in this corridor, which goes from Third Street to the east edge of town. And so in that corridor, we're looking at 50% commercial and 50% residential. So in the broader corridor, we still have the majority residential or majority commercial with less residential. So.
Said it's 79% commercial, right? Just to.
Yeah, in this in this little space that we have that which includes some commercial, which kind of goes up to anglers beyond this subdivision. So we have some ability to add some more residential to still meet our community goals for that mixed use corridor.
Perfect, thank you. So then the the question is maybe less, do we have too much residential? Because you're saying we're already heavy on the commercial and that 50/50 target goal that you were talking about. So really, the question is pedestrian active frontage as opposed to separating uses horizontally versus vertically? And are we creating a dead space in this immediate vicinity?
Right.
Staff's analysis is that we are not creating a dead space.
Correct. Yeah, we feel again that this is going to be a horizontal mix of uses that these multifamily, this multifamily residential use is going to be complementary to the uses on the whole in this area. There is some walkability. There is some challenges of we as we've sort of discussed, this is an older PUD that was developed a long time ago without the standard level of pedestrian connections that we have now. So while there is some some limitations to where how we can walk from this place or how the residents can walk from this place to its commercial areas, there are some sidewalks in the area. Some of those like Resort Drive is a pretty low volume road. It can be walked on. The uses are compatible in that the office would close at night and the restaurants would be busy. So there would be some different levels of use in the daytime and the nighttime that would allow some pedestrians to be able to walk through that parking lot, let's say. So I think that the opportunity is there for this to be a viable use and can connect to a lot of services right nearby. So hopefully, that activity from these residences will compensate for any dead use that there might be during the more more active times of the day.
Perfect, thank you. Did you want to add to that or you just just?
I'll wait till the last.
That's fine.
Opportunity.
Anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, I have a follow up question. Can we bring up the site map again?
Who's sharing?
I can share it. Okay.
Okay, there's on the site map, you show the existing road to the to the teller spot out on Mount Warner Road. Is there a reason you're removing a road there? Is there a reason that cannot be used for sidewalks?
Yeah, sure, I could.
Talking about using the teller access lane as a like a private sidewalk kind of thing or something? I mean.
As as I mean, it's it's you're not disrupting foliage there. There's an existing road there.
Well, it would just, I mean, even if we did agree to that, which obviously would be a private, you know, private property kind of decision, it would refer it to mean anything. You'd have to get both Ski Corps and E3. E3 would have to build their own, otherwise be a sidewalk to nowhere. And then you'd also have to you'd be relying on Ski Corps to doing doing the same thing, which they've unequivocally said no.
They said, so what was the question you asked them and what they?
Would you ever consider a public easement on your property for a sidewalk? No. In that location? I mean, it's.
As part of this existing.
I think, I mean, just big picture, we obviously we appreciate, and you guys have seen us a lot last few months on other projects. Hopefully, you can certainly appreciate that. I guess I'll take a step back. The the reality to Toby's point is this was a PUD that was designed a long time ago. No different than antiquated obsolete commercial office around the country. If you, you know, read all over Denver or whatever, it's a problem, it's a theme. And I think the reality of the situation is no doubt this PUD was ill designed by today's modern standards. But on the flip side, for it to become, I think, a creative and opportunity for the community, you have to be creative on how we're going to adaptively reuse it. You know, from a commercial standpoint, the reason this building was sold is because it sat outside of Vectra operating it as a bank. But if you were to ask Vectra, they really used only about, I don't know, 25% of the space. Like a modern bank is around 2,000 feet if you were to ask a bunch of commercial brokers. This is 7,000 feet, not including basement or the old, if you went upstairs ever, there's like, you know, wood panel president chairman offices with fireplaces. If you can imagine, you're like martinis and, you know, 80s banker lifestyle. If you can imagine, you're like martinis and, you know, 80s banker lifestyle. I'm just imagining it from the movies. So I think, you know, and then the reality is that yes, there were a couple of commercial tenants in this space. There was a dental hygienist, a tour guide operator that had a little office, et cetera, that we, by the way, have paid to move into better spaces. But these, they had a, they struggled for years to keep this building occupied. And because from a retail commercial standpoint, it's not well-positioned. It has no good frontage, it has no good visibility. Banks don't need tellers anymore, banks barely need ATMs these days. And from a location standpoint, hence Vectra moving to that old San Juan building, I mean, this building was going to die. And no doubt if someone sold it at a cheap enough number, you could keep filling it with super cheap commercial uses and all these kinds of things. You know, again, we think that, you know, very, on a very, very small scale, but I'm sure you've read about, you know, 80s office buildings in Denver being repurposed into apartment buildings, you know? So it's the same theme of like, you know, you kind of have a choice where you can, on the flip side, you know, I think as staff outline, you couldn't almost dream up a better mix of uses on a mixed use project, you know, office, residential, commercial, I'm sorry, yeah, rest, retail, residential, commercial. And undoubtedly because of its, it was derived in the 80s, it was more car heavy and all those various things. So I know, and getting back to your question, like I guess we fully appreciate the consternation. And I know staff and Emmerich and co, we've, have kind of put our foot down a little bit, not from a, not willing to spend the money. I mean, that's the whole idea of cash in lieu. But we just think it, because of all the other opportunities to provide good pedestrian connections, whether that's Pine Grove or Resort Drive, whatever we all decide, it just seems like of all the various options of how to spend the money, this, that would be the biggest waste of money is to have this random little stretch of a couple hundred feet of internal sidewalk to nowhere. And so we're just trying to maximize ultimately, fast forward 18 months or whatever it takes to conclude the project, maximize the impact. And I think ultimately, I know that the code and everyone wants developers to kind of do their part. And so we're saying like with, from a money standpoint, because at the end of the day, it's all about the budget, you know, we'll do, we'll do it as is, but let's, let's make it go the farthest, you know, and actually have the best impact. So, and I don't know if you've walked or driven that little stretch since you've seen the application, but I mean, these are not little cute aspens. I mean, these are, you know, beautiful mature trees. And as Gabby alluded to, we plan on doing a kind of a full refresh because honestly the, the little commercial HOI didn't quite take care of every landscaping so well. But it's pretty unique to have something this mature, if you will, from a landscaping standpoint. And, you know, ultimately again, we just think it would be a silly thing to kind of light that opportunity on fire. So hopefully that, whether you agree with or not, like we're being incredibly thoughtful about it. We're not trying to get out of an obligation or a requirement. But again, I think if ultimately your guy's job is to say, okay, are these guys trying to do the right thing and meet the intent or the spirit of it all? And I think, you know, the building was going to die undoubtedly, or turn into something that was more blighted. I mean, we all watched, if anyone knows, I'm sorry if I'm offending someone who might have owned Three Peaks, but like that was an example of what was going to happen. You know, that building, I mean, outside of popping in for a drink before a Strings concert, no one went there anymore. And now E3, they're not thriving yet, but we all know what they're going, you know, that'll become a cool place to be. And then I, you know, obviously Ski Corps and then mixing in some residential, it's a good, it's a good mix. So is it perfect? No. Will we have designed it this way from scratch? No. But net-net to kind of really nail the opportunity, we think it's, we're doing everything we can. And ultimately, we may come back down the road as part of the cash in lieu agreement provision that I know is in the condition. And I guess we may build the sidewalk there, but I think there's consensus, there's probably better opportunities during the course of this project.
Great.
Sorry, that was what I was going to say later, but it seemed like, because I do get frustrated when other people are frustrated with something that we've obviously spent, you know, hours and hours debating internally and with these guys. So hopefully you can appreciate the full context, at least again, whether you agree or not.
I appreciate it. I have a question, well, if you're done, I have a question.
Very much done.
For Emmerich. So.
Sorry.
Emmerich, I think he had made a statement, correct me if I misunderstood this, but I thought he said that the sidewalks would fall as a low priority of, of the Pine Grove work? That if there is going to be a cut to be, if you're doing Pine Grove development, what if you're going to do a cut somewhere and you don't, or in terms of you only have so many funds, the sidewalks would probably fall lower in priority. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah.
I'll go. For staff, Toby, where does the office space fall in your analysis of commercial versus residential?
Commercial.
Even though this would be a conditional use under current guidelines, right? Because it would still be, would not be commercial use, office use on the ground floor, pedestrian access is a conditional use, I believe. Is that correct in the CC zone district?
I don't know if that's correct. I could check that. But office, our community plan just talks about commercial versus residential generally, and office is generally a commercial use. Office can provide commercial activity in the same way that retail would, you know, dentist, dentist office, doctor's office, yoga studio, those are all things that could provide that same level of activity in a commercial area. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't hold one type of commercial above the other for that standard, but definitely our plan is high level and broad, and it doesn't really get into the details when we get down to the site-specific level. So.
I'm sorry, I didn't do that homework myself because we do differentiate that in the CO zone district. But anyway, moving on, can you tell us, I haven't seen this one, condition number three about describing the den can't be a bedroom and if there's a, used as a bedroom, there could be enforcement actions. I've not seen that condition before, and I was wondering why that's necessary and why it's there.
Yeah. And Rebecca just was able to look up the use real quick. I will get to your question, but office is a use by right in the community commercial zone district, so it's not a conditional use here, but you may were thinking of some of our other areas. But, so the den and bedroom condition, we maybe haven't seen it too much because we don't have a lot of reuse of old buildings, but they have strange spaces that don't always have windows that can be used. So again, with our pressure to have housing, we've seen some housing coming into commercial buildings. It's problematic because there are spaces that maybe could have been an office in older building codes that maybe are big enough for a bedroom, so they're being used as a bedroom. But that's bad from a lot of standpoints, a lot of code and life safety standpoints. So when there are strange spaces like there are in an existing building, they can be used really just as offices and extra spaces that add, you know, value to it, to a unit, but they really can't be used as bedrooms. So we're just trying to save ourselves some headaches for the future to avoid some code compliance and some life safety problems and just really use these spaces as dens, not as bedrooms. So that's why it's there, to hopefully make it clear. Sometimes developers, you know, they will get the entitlements on the project and then hand it over to someone else who runs that property or rents it out. So we're just trying to make that clear for the future, that spaces that can't be defined as bedrooms or the building code for health, safety reasons cannot be used as bedrooms, cannot be retrofitted without, you know, meeting proper codes. So.
Interesting. I wasn't thinking that because I was also wondering if there, if it was a bedroom or changes a bedroom, that also changes the parking requirement, does it not?
It does, yes. So that was why we had to be clear on which spaces were dens and not bedrooms. There were some earlier iterations of the project that showed maybe some beds in those areas. Again, we don't want to encourage any sleeping in rooms that are not meant for sleeping, but it does change the parking requirements. But this project does meet all of its parking requirements for the legal bedrooms that it's showing.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Do we have any public comment online for this agenda item? Okay. You can raise your hand if you do. Zoom hand. Okay. Seeing none, first give you the chance, you have any final follow-up you wanted to offer? No? Toby?
No.
And now any other final questions? Gavin?
No, thank you.
Perfect. I will close our public portion of this agenda item and come to commissioners for discussion and a motion.
No motion. No motion.
I was just going to say, I'm very supportive of the project. Any of the pedestrian activity that takes place here is usually surrounding the parking lot itself. People drive in, they get out of their cars, they go to the restaurant, they do whatever business they do. So I have no problem with that. The city has decided Pine Grove Road is more critical than along Mount Warner. I accept that because I also believe is more important. The in lieu of provides flexibility, which is important because we're not sure exactly what we want to get done, what will get done, how it will get done. There have always been parking issues associated with the Three Peaks, C3, Social Club, whatever it's called now. And hopefully this resolves some of those. And it's the reuse of an existing building for residential purposes, which we know we need. So I won't make a motion until, you know, John has a.
Thank you. A chance to. Do whatever you want. Any other discussion?
I'll second, just come right behind that because I agree with everything you just said. And I think that when it comes to the sidewalk, I think this is an excellent example of when fee in lieu is very appropriate. I think that the sidewalks to nowhere are a pet peeve of mine, and this is, I think a sidewalk there, maybe eventually it will be appropriate and great, they'll figure that out. But right now, I'm glad that we have the opportunity to prioritize those funds in places where they're better utilized and just a higher priority in general. So I'm totally in support of that and the conditional use to allow residential. I think that if we just strictly adhere to the code and only, and they just had commercial in the pedestrian active frontage, I think that would create some really odd access in that little area, just on Mount Warner Road, like again, no sidewalk, all the pedestrian activities in the, in the parking lot. So I think it's a great project, great use.
Any other discussion?
Say I agree. I did hear Emmerich regarding sidewalks on Pine Grove, not, not germane to this project per se. I do hope the city does prioritize that, that it will add to the walkability of this area.
Gavin or Rich?
Rich is, you know, giving me the hand. I love this project. I love the project and everything that you've, you've brought, the applicant's brought to the table, I think is right on. The challenges I have is on how we're, from the city, you know, standpoint, how we're coaching what we want to do for walkability of the neighborhood. And I would like to, you know, because basically we're, you know, we're all talking here about putting residential in a pedestrian active area. And so we're acknowledging this is a pedestrian active area. 14 times the applicant has talked about walkability of this area, yet we, that value proposition of walkability, I think we're, we are not living up to it. And I think we can do a better job of living up to it. My concern about holding off the work for Pine Grove is I have seen many times how the capital improvement project prioritization works and doesn't work. And Emmerich has even stated that this would be low priority. And we know complete streets is low priority in all the work that has to be done in the, in the city. And, and I look at this and I go, oh, you know what? The Strings is across the street from a new restaurant at E3. So there's going to be, there's going to be people who are going to want to walk, you know, from the concert before or after, you know, park here, park there, you know, and walk over. I look at the area and I go, well, maybe there's not, you know, maybe there's not a sidewalk. There's an open section of sidewalks on the north side of Mount Warner, but the south side of Mount Warner from Strings all the way to Wild Horse is complete. And so I feel, I mean, there may be other ideas, but I feel that putting off the work in lieu of is not the right decision. And I, and because this is a pedestrian active area, when we, we want to promote walkability, we need to, we need to work on that value proposition. And so given that it's, we've already acknowledged as low priority for sidewalks on Pine Grove, so build it and it gets torn up in three years and gets redone. But at least we have three years of use, three years of community safety and walkability. And so I'm, I'm, I'm fine with building something there that we throw away because we know that it's a low priority and it's ever going to get done. But we need that, we need something there for walkability and adhering to that value proposition. That's my thoughts.
The problem with that is that it's in the middle of nowhere because it's not connected to any other streets.
Right.
Or sidewalks. You would have to have two already developed properties also decide to put in sidewalks for it to ever be connected to anything besides grass on either end of it for the next, never say never, 15 years, 20 years? And so there's really no reason to put in something that cannot even be accessed.
Maybe I'm misinterpreting the, the, the site plan, but you could walk through the park, I mean, from, from the front of their houses, their, these houses, they could walk in front, walk through the parking lots and then connect over into, there's a light, there's a light signal at Pine Grove. So that's one of the advantages of actually moving traffic, walking traffic through Pine Grove versus Resort. Resort, there is no traffic light.
I'll clarify because I thought we were talking about where they actually are required to on their property, which would be along Mount Warner. That's, that's what I was.
Yes, and I was saying, okay, let's take that money.
I can speak the same language with you. Along Mount Warner, I don't see that being connected to anything anytime soon. And I think that would be just a horrible decision.
I was talking about take that.
Pine Grove is pretty close to being the same.
Or basically, I think it's CDC, I forgot, it was like E or something, or there was alternative, there was an alternative. One, one was in Looa, the other one is in, you know, move it to a different location. I'm saying let's take that money and move it to a different location and improve the, the access from those lots, you know, lot one, two, and three, to Pine Grove and Mount Warner intersection. Because once you're at that intersection, you get to Strings, go across the street and then you go, you have a sidewalk there. So it's, that's, that's just one idea, but I believe, I'm, I'm not in favor of doing the in lieu of cash. I think we can do something to improve the walkability and I don't, and mount with, with Pine Grove, maybe 15 years before they do something. And we can take that money and use it now because if it go, that money's going to go into the capital improvement fund and we're never going to see it.
All right, additional discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying, John. But we've been through this so many times, the, you know, the sidewalks that start and end in the middle of nowhere. But don't worry about it, we have a master plan that eventually we'll catch up with and we'll build all the sidewalks, which we all know isn't going to happen. At least the in lieu of gives us flexibility as a city. Where do we need it more? And we have some money to do something with. And, and so, you know, want to take a, a partial solution or maybe it'd be the final piece to another sidewalk solution somewhere else? I, I mean, it's just, you know, to me, sex one, half dozen the other.
Any other discussion or motion? Yeah.
I'll go. Yeah, we have projects going on on the other side of Resort Drive between there and Central Park, and we're requiring, and they're putting sidewalks in. Some sidewalks are already in place along Central Park. And so there is a plan. And to say that, I mean, since we're seeing this project have a redevelopment, who's to say that the property next to them won't redevelop as well for the same reasons? You know, to say that it's not going to happen for 15 years, Ski Corps has been doing a lot of activities, let's just say, with that property. And staff has said, our goal is to put a sidewalk there. And so the impracticality of because there's trees there now, well, the trees are going to be there in five years, seven years, when the city. to be there in five years, seven years, when the city decides, okay, now we're going to put the sidewalk in and they're going to cut the trees down then too. So that, to me, that's not a valid reason not to put them in there. I like trees as much as anyone else. And it hasn't been demonstrated to me absolutely that all the trees have to come down or how horrible it would be. Yes, it's inconvenient, but that's not the code. And I'm going to read the code again, or actually before I read it, I'm going to say, you know, Emmerich talked about how it's not connected, it wouldn't be connected to other sidewalks. That is a completely separate condition from the one I'm about to read and one that is also required, also required. So it did meet condition number two, but not condition number one, at least in my mind, which is, sorry, just scrolling a little bit here because I'm going to read it again for the record. The onsite multimodal facility is impractical or inconsistent with the intent of the CDC or would not further the community plan. It certainly wouldn't further the community plan. Our community plan is to have sidewalks. Impractical. That's a, that's a broad word and how you want to leverage that, you know, we've heard, we've heard the arguments forwarding it's about the impracticality of it. I'm not convinced that it's that impractical. That's, that's one of the things, oh, that I'm having trouble with. I have no problem with the project. I love the idea of it. I have no problem with the ground floor use, et cetera, et cetera. Make sure I state that. The few, the fee and lieu, let's, you know, we have this dream, okay, it's going to help the Pine Grove project. It's going to be a drop in the bucket for the, that project. To say that that amount of money is going to make any difference on whether that Pine Grove section gets done, talk about unrealistic, that's pretty insignificant, you know? And then where that money goes, I don't know. So I'm having a lot of trouble with that. I understand that it currently won't connect to anything, but to say it's not going to happen for 15 years, that's, that's a, that's imagination. That's not reality. We don't know what's going to happen. Yeah.
You guys surprised me a lot with your concerns tonight. And I've been, I've been absorbing this a lot. What we have in front of us is a development plan and a conditional use. Development plan could have been approved administratively. The city engineer, who was far more of an expert about complete streets than we are, has already agreed to, to their fee, their cash in lieu. And yet we're not talking about the conditional use or the criteria for that at all. We're talking about how much we love sidewalks. And I love sidewalks too, but I'm not quite sure that's our talking point tonight.
I'm talking about the code. Four, one, four.
I'm talking about the criteria in front of us on how we approve projects.
That is one of the conditions of approval, that the sidewalk, that we have to accept one of those conditions of
Mm-hmm.
Or whether that's a stress or not, I'm not positive. And I specifically asked that question, I didn't get answered about how much of that is a reviewed by planning commission versus just a engineering decision? I don't mean to, my back to you guys.
Well, and a little bit of it is just to point out my surprise, just as a discussion point, but also that I'd love to direct us into more of a, let's talk about the criteria. And if we don't like one of the criteria because of sidewalks, let's make sure we're very clear about how our vote relates to our criteria tonight. How does the sidewalk concern relate to not being able to support one of the specific criteria?
Can I add one thing to that conversation? Because we're fixated on the code that says we have to put a sidewalk. There's also code that says that we have to maintain existing vegetation. And so they're kind of, why can't I think of the word? They're, they're not in sync with each other. And I think that the solution using a code defined alternative is appropriate.
How I link the two is basically this is conditional use to allow multifamily residential in a pedestrian active building. So what we're doing here is we're, we're adding residential and we, and we know that residential requires more like walkability. And so I tie the two, I tie the two together. You're saying, well, how do you do it? I'm, you know, how do, am I tying that together? I'm tying that together of that conditional use is because, and want, want to ensure more walkability. And so, but the CDC 414 talks all about connected streets. And this is, we're, we need to adhere to the CDC 414 and we are not adhering to 414.
Just, just to be clear, to make Brian you happy. Criteria number four, the proposed use complies with all other applicable requirements of the CDC. Four, one, four is one of those. And as I mentioned, I don't believe we, I'm not positive. I'm really on the fence about this. I was hoping to be better convinced that condition number one of alternative compliance is being met. There's our
That's perfect.
There's my legal standing.
Yeah, at least it's for the record. That's wonderful. I, for the record, disagree with you and think that it is being well met in the alternative compliance path. But I appreciate that you put it on, on the record. Thank you. Any other discussion or happily a motion?
I'll do a happily motion. A happily motion that we approve PL 2025 0050 with five conditions, I believe.
Mm-hmm. You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Gavin, it's, I keep forgetting to come to you. Have you wanted to chime in on any of this?
Um, I, like others, I largely agree with what Lou put forward and his thoughts. I think it's using logic and reason to apply limited funds and resources in a way that's most productive. I think it's a good project overall and I think it'll benefit the, the city and the community.
Okay, thanks Gavin. I only would chime in to say that, you know, my line of questioning that I had for Toby regarding conditional use and vertical versus horizontal uses and specifically allowing pedestrian active residential here. You know, reiterating how important, of course, it is to consider every project uniquely. I think considering this one uniquely, I think it makes a lot of sense. In general, I have a lot of concern about not activating the pedestrian area, but knowing this neighborhood, knowing the dedicated open spaces across the street, knowing how it's, how it's related to other development, I think it makes perfect sense in this case. And, and I support all the criteria related to that. So I just wanted to kind of point that out. Anybody else not have a chance for a discussion on this item? Or to add?
Yeah, I like to say that everything the applicant has brought forward, I agree with. I think they've done a, a really good job. I like what you're, you know, you're proposing here. I, where I'm struggling with is, is how we take that project in a pedestrian active area and provide that value proposition that we've been talking about, which is, you know, the rationale of why we're accepting this was, was the walkability here. And so, and that's part of CDC 414. And I'm feeling like we're letting our community down by not, you know, adhering to those guidelines. And I, I think we can do better. And people are looking, looking to saying, oh, and lieu of is, is, you know, gives us that flexibility. But anybody who's worked through the capital improvement projects prioritization process will understand that that money is gone. We don't, and, and we have money here. I want to use it to improve the walkability value proposition. So I'm, I will struggle, I would struggle to, you know, to follow the staff's recommendation of how they propose the, you know, however they propose resolving CDC 414.
Good. Any other discussion? All right, then I will call for a vote on the motion.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And Gavin? Gavin, you're muted.
Gavin, speak.
Gavin, oh.
One minute.
He says one minute, all right.
His computer's Sorry, my computer froze up for a moment. Yes.
Okay, thank you Gavin. Then the motion passes five to two. Thanks for your time. We will jump into our agenda item number two. This is a agenda item for recommendation to council is an appeal, appeal PL 2025 0105. Welcome back AJ. Of legal nonconforming STR use abandonment related to PL 2022 0460. Is the applicant online? Because there's nobody here.
I believe Steve is online as the applicant.
Okay. Steve, are you able to unmute and do you have a presentation for us? I think you're still muted, let's make sure. Oh, there we go.
Okay, you can hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, my name is Steve Lipton. We have a condo in Steamboat Springs for about 20 years. When we, when the STR licensing came out, we applied for it. We were granted the STR licenses from the inception. But this year when we applied, for reasons unknown, because they wouldn't explain why, we were denied and the denial came for abandonment. And since the unit wasn't abandoned and that the, met the requirements of having been rented during the 12 month period, I am at a loss as to why we were denied, since we seem to have met all the requirements. I submitted all the paperwork for the appeal and with that, the rules state that to maintain the STR license, it must have been a license renewal form, which was submitted, a notarized self inspection, which was submitted, provided 24/7 local contact, which is provided, proof that the unit was rented, which was provided through Airbnb, and finally proof that taxes were remitted. All those criteria were met. So I, if there was an objection, I'm unaware of it and I'd like to raise that, to challenge that objection, but I'm unaware what it is. Because the only information I was given was denied for abandonment. And that doesn't seem to be appropriate.
Good, thank you very much Steve. And does staff have a presentation as well?
I do. Okay, this will be very brief. As planning commission knows, we adopted the STR overlay zone in 2002 with an effective date of June 15th, 2022. To be eligible to receive an STR license in overlay zone B3, which is a restricted yellow zone where this subject property is located, a property must have been lawfully used as what we used to call a vacation rental prior to June 15th, 2022. If that was the case, which it was in this particular circumstance, we were able to grant legal nonconforming status. And that allowed this property to be eligible to apply for and obtain an STR license. Of course, legal nonconforming status must not be abandoned in order to maintain the ability to continue to renew an STR license. The STR license and renewal process is the mechanism that we use to ask the applicant to provide proof that that legal nonconforming use has not been abandoned. So you heard the appellant say that through the renewal process, he was asked to provide proof of the use itself and that was provided in, through our review of that information along with the information that was originally submitted with the prior issuance of the STR license, we found that the legal nonconforming status of the use had been abandoned. So some key dates in this particular case, in March, March 29th of 2023, the initial STR license was issued for this property. We have proof from the property owner that the last documented STR stay to have occurred in 2023 ended on October 25th of that year. In March of last year, 2024, we did renew the license. And then this year, when the renewal application was submitted, we reviewed the updated information that we received from the property owner. And we see that the first documented stay to have occurred in 2024 didn't begin until October 28th of 2024, albeit very close. October 25th of 23 to October 28th of 24 exceeds 12 consecutive months. And per section 103D of the Community Development Code, we have determined that the legal nonconforming status of that STR use has been abandoned. Just as a reminder, legal nonconforming status does not equate to licensing. Those time periods do not align. We only use the licensing renewal process to look at the use itself and to determine whether the use has been abandoned during that prior licensing period. In this case, we did determine that the legal nonconforming status had been abandoned because the use did not occur for more than 12 consecutive months. Because we determined that the legal nonconforming status had been abandoned, we were unable to renew the STR license in 2025. That information was provided to the property owner in the denial letter, which I have included in your packet. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from commissioners to the appellant or staff?
Rebecca, this is, I'm new to the planning commission. Does the code allow any flexibility to the 12 months, 12 month requirement for legal nonconforming status?
It does not.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll go for Mr. Lipton. You mentioned that you don't feel that your status was abandoned. Do you have other rental dates that aren't shown, that aren't being documented by the city?
I do not. What Rebecca said was accurate. The mistake has just been clarified to me is, I was under the impression that 12 months were a calendar month, was it, were within the calendar year. I did not realize until moments ago that the 12 months went from last rental, the other rental, because I could have rented it in December of 23 and that would have carried over. So I was, based on my interpretation of what, when I read the rules, not arguing that I am right, based on my interpretation of it, I was under the belief that it was calendar, not rental to rental. So if somebody rented one in January, theoretically, they would have to rent it again in January of the following year, negating the whole rest of the year, which seems counterintuitive.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Gavin, giving you a chance online?
No additional questions.
None other in person? I don't either, but making sure I'm not missing anybody. Okay. So then typically coming back, Steve, unless you had any final follow up you wanted to offer as well?
Well, my appeal is that this is relatively new process, only been in place since 2022. I ask for a leeway, hopefully a leniency, to, since it's only been, there's only three days missed by and it was not the intention, there's no intention to abandon or deceive anybody. It was clearly my misinterpretation that there was a calendar 12 months. And now that I know that, if granted the variance or leniency, I would be fully aware of that. I know there's, I know from legal studies, there's never to say guilty with an explanation, but that's what I am hoping for. And this can appeal to everybody to see if there is any leniency and room to maneuver.
Okay, thank you Steve. Any final follow up from you, Rebecca?
No, I don't.
Any other new questions? Okay, I'll close our public portion for this agenda and come to commissioners for discussion and a motion.
I pretty much hate all these appeals. I think the, I've had several conversations now with several council people, actually. They hate them as well. They're always difficult. I think, you know, the staff does what staff needs to do. And it's a pretty rigid system. And that just means we have to live with it. I would hope, I will use a Bryan Adams word, that we have some, some room for empathy on occasion. But But in this case, I'm not sure that would apply.
I feel exactly the same way. These kind of are a little torturous to me every single time. And I actually had, I thought of a similar, it was a similar line of thinking as the applicant on this one, just reading back through the way that the code is written, a period of 12 consecutive months. And it occurred to me that that could absolutely be interpreted, before he said that, that it could absolutely be interpreted as the months themselves. So if you rented in October and you don't rent November, December, that's when the months start to count. And I think that, yeah. I don't want to put a judgment label on whether that's a good interpretation or not, but it's, it's a reasonable interpretation if you're taking it word for word. And so I'm struggling with the fact that this is a very rigid, it's a very rigid piece of code with no forgiveness, even on appeal, because it's written the way it's written. And there's no room for anyone to say, well, you can see the intent. You can see what they were trying to do. There isn't room for that in the code on this. And everything else, most other code compliance issues, there's an opportunity to write it. And I wish that there was an opportunity in these cases, I think that there should be an opportunity in these cases to show that you had the best of intentions and just didn't understand it. Yeah, that's where I'm at. These are hard.
So let me say, I very much totally agree with what you just said, that concerns how things can be interpreted, how it feels very rigid. And Lou, you said that as well. I was thinking about it and trying to give myself context. I don't know if this is helpful for anybody else. But when we talk about how rigid it is, a 365-day leeway on just being able to do a single rental in order to show intent on having an STR on your property is a ton of leeway compared to it has to be done every 30 days, or it has to be done every 120 days, or it has to be done every six months. So when we pick a date, we're trying to pick a time period that is, already has some leeway built into it, if you want to think about it from that side, from an even more rigid side. 365 days is a lot of leeway on a single rental. I don't know. It helped me have that context, for what it's worth.
I think if you understand, if you, if you make the assumption that everyone understands what that piece of code says, absolutely. That's a, that's a ton of time, right? But if you did not understand, for whatever reason, because the information wasn't there, because you just read it wrong, for whatever reason, that's where you get to those 365 days. Actually, you get, you know, six months past those 365 days, reapply for your STR license, and then you're told, six months ago, you broke the rule, and there's no room for you to fix that. So that's, that's the hard part for me, that there's no remedy.
Sure. I guess the, what has stuck in my mind with that is, is that the, the intent behind the non-abandonment is, if you're going to have this legal nonconforming use, use it. And if you're, and if you're not using it within 30 days, you're not showing intent. No, 30 days isn't enough. That's not, that's not enough to show intent. People have complexity in their lives. Okay, it shouldn't be 30 days. How about, how about three months? No, that's probably not enough. How about 12 months to show even a single bit of intent that you meant to do it? Even, you know, it's not misunderstanding or interpreting. It's, it's the fact that there wasn't even a rental. There was no intent to even use it as a short-term use in these 12-month periods. And if you really wanted to use the use, probably would have happened within a year. And that, that's the flip side of the coin.
I don't know that I necessarily agree with that. Just, like, if you use it one time, that's one time a year, one weekend a year, one long weekend, one week a year, whatever. I think that that's a reasonable way to use your short-term rental license, if that's what you got it for. So, yeah.
And utilize all of our residential product for a single week a year.
Well, we don't, do we know that that's the only time that this home gets used? Or is it his primary residence during the rest of the year? Do we know any of that? I don't know.
Wouldn't be a primary home, because we wouldn't even be on this boat if it were a primary residence.
I don't think that's necessarily true.
Yeah, you have a different criteria. If it's your primary home, then you have those, like, homestays. I forget what the word.
It's a different kind of STR license, right? Isn't it still?
Right, but the use, the legal nonconforming use is not related to all of this. We talked about that at our last one of these. So we can, we can agree to disagree, but year worth of discussion on kind of why are we doing STR licensing? And what are we trying to, what's our intent of it? Is to not have vacant homes that are used once a year. If you're going to use it as an STR, and you have been historically, we're not going to take away your right, but let's, let's use it that way then. And if we're not using it that way, then we're not using it that way. That's, that's the flip side to the, to the empathy. I was just kind of adding to the conversation on, on what I agree with you is the difficulty of it all.
City Council as to whether or not staff got the call right. Can I add one thing?
No, I'm sorry, Steve. Once we've closed the public portion, we can't come back to the appellant.
Okay, because what you said sparked some ideas.
You're definitely welcome to reach out to Rebecca, the director, afterwards. Rich, you were gonna, I think.
I like Bryan's analogy of there's 365 days. It's a commercial operation. I mean, what business is only open one day, one day, or one weekend, or one week a year? A business is what really, we have it classified as a commercial operation. It's not a hobby. And the other one is, if they only want to rent it once a year, then they can get a different type of license and get that. If that's what they want to do, then fine. I mean, I don't even, I know what the implications are of not having an STR license, you know, a commercial one versus the one-time-a-year offer, or however many weeks it is. But I don't need to go, we don't need to go into that. There is another option. We're not denying that the use that has been used to be able to find a way to continue doing that. And then, what AJ said. I mean, one, one year, it's outside that period. And we've talked about it before. And the rules were made explicitly strict because we are trying to reduce the numbers of nightly rentals in this zone district, this overlay district. Sad but true.
Any additional discussion? Gavin, do you have any online?
No additional thoughts.
Okay.
Yeah, I like to.
John, did I come to you?
I like to make a comment. So I did, you know, because I'm also, as people know, uncomfortable with how the law is written, or how we are, maybe not how it's written, but how we're communicating this. And I did have a discussion, legal team just understand, and they were very clear that there is no provision in the law for exceptions, whether it's a, you know, because you cannot create something, whether it's a two-day late versus a 30-day late. You know, so, you know, if you're trying to, you know, write a law that's very specific, you know, to those, and when do you allow exceptions? When you don't allow exceptions? It just gets very muddied in general. And so in this case, it is, what, two or three days? I think it was like three days late. So that was right on what, you know, basically their, their coaching is basically, from a legal standpoint of the law, there are no exceptions. But also, you know, the applicant should be very clear that the Planning Commission, all we're doing is providing an opinion. We are, and we can actually criticize the opinion, or we can criticize the code. We don't have to agree to the code. And we are ultimately providing an opinion to City Council. And City Council is the one who's going to make the, make the decision. So the applicant should be clear that, you know, we're just providing opinions here, and, and it's going to ultimately come down to City Council.
Any other discussion? And John, I hear you, but I look at the code, and the code is clear. And the opinion is staff follow the code, in my opinion.
I, I do agree that staff, you know, follow the code.
Any other discussion?
I'll just follow up on what John said. I don't, I hate to use the word, but I think the basis of an appeal is there's something that we think is, I don't know, fuzzy, maybe is the right word. And maybe there is room for an empathy factor, just to, just to keep that going. But, you know, we know where we are. These are the rules, and they're pretty strict. And that's where we are.
Anybody else? Anybody want to make a motion?
PL 2005, an uphold of planning director. Related to 2020460, an STR license. LCSTR 2023 0293 at 1456 Morgan Court.
Thank you. Good motion, I like it. Is there a, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Do you hear my motion? I don't want to read that again.
Can you maybe just say it again, so we make sure we have it on record?
Okay. I recommend that Planning Commission recommends denial of appeal, PL 2025 0105, in upholding the planning director's decision of legal nonconforming STR abandonment related to PL 2022 0460, and STR license LCSTR 2023 0293 at 1456 Morgan Court.
Thank you.
And second.
Thank you for the second. Any final discussion? Gavin, any final discussion from you?
None here.
Thank you.
So in the past, I've been, you know, for the applicant of supporting their denial. But I have to say, in this particular case, it, you know, seems like the applicant does, it did understand the law. He didn't do the right steps to execute it, but in this case, he understood that, you know, there was a 12 months there. And so I'm going to have difficulty supporting the applicant on this one.
Any other final discussion? Okay, call for a vote?
Yes is in support of staff's findings. Yes.
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 Aye?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Steve.
What's the, I mean, when I got the email, they said it's something with the City Council also. I'm not sure what the procedure is now. Is it a dead issue now, or does it still go before the City Council?
I'll have, I'll have, like, I'm in charge. I'm sure Rebecca will be reaching out to you with when that meeting date will be for City Council.
Okay, so there is a second. So this, I understand the procedure, because this is my first time before this organization. You know, you're the city, basically. If I'm denied here, what's the purpose for going to the City Council? Are they the final deciders, or has it already been decided?
They are. We just made a recommendation motion of what we believe City Council's findings should be. And I don't know, I don't know what the date is, but I'm sure you could ask Rebecca, any follow-up questions offline?
Okay.
Great, thank you, Steve.
Thank you for hearing me, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good rest of your meeting.
Do we have a director's report this evening?
Real short, I just wanted to mention, we have scheduled a Planning Commission policy works, well, work session, I'll call it, on June 9th, with the intention of providing some training to Planning Commission and providing opportunities for some dialogue and questions, and input from the Planning Commissioners on future work session topics, and possibly some additional training sessions as well. I also intend to schedule another work session in the future, maybe later in June or early July, to provide sort of a overview of the short-term rental regulations and overlay zone, as well as to just give you all an update on sort of how implementation and enforcement have been going for the last couple of years. Again, I think that would provide a good opportunity for Planning Commissioners to ask questions and get some additional information that you may have on that program and those regulations as well.
The only thing I would like to add to that is, if you gave some consideration, do we have enough data to maybe take a relook at some of the overlay zones? Some of those areas that were fuzzy, some of the yellow areas? To see if we want, we have any, do we want to change them to red? Do we want to change them to green? What do we want to do with them?
I think that would be a really interesting conversation. I would maybe look to Planning Commission to see what sort of data you would be interested in seeing to have that conversation.
Okay.
So maybe that's one of the topics for discussion at that work session. And then we could schedule, you know, if we decide, if it's the consensus of Planning Commission that you want to take a look at that, then we could schedule that out, because I think that's just going to take a little time to prepare. But I would be really interested to know what kind of data we might need to present to you all. So I would say, give that some thought, and we can have that discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Any more in the director's report? That was all of it. Thank you. Looks like we have one old business public hearing minutes from March 27th. Any changes or a motion to approve? We're all looking at Rich, like, he doesn't have to, he doesn't have to motion. Sorry, AJ, you motioned to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you, Gavin. Then that passes unanimously. And that's it for us tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, then we are adjourned at 6:38.
Thank you all.